Tonight, we have our study session regarding the TPOAM contract.
Also, too, I'd like to make an announcement that Lisa Hicks Clayton will be coming in
late. She did call, and she's on her way. At this point, does anybody want to open up the discussion?
I just need the status of where we're at with the contract, obviously.
Councilwoman Miyake, or, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't even see you out there. I'm sorry. You're the one we need to talk to.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We have been, my name is Bethra O'Donnell, I think you guys heard me. We've been negotiating long and hard after the contract, as we believe it was ratified toward the end of December 2018, essentially in front of a different board. There's a lot of new board members here tonight. So, there was a dispute. We've been, we've met several times, at least seven, going back and forth, and we've come to an agreement essentially on everything. We had two remaining items that were outstanding. One of them had to do with part-time employees in the ordinance department, and another had to do with tuition reimbursement. And what we did on that was, we drafted some MOUs regarding those two topics. And I'm really collapsing all of the negotiations that we had. But we, back in April, and I know that the mayor and Corporation Council can say this as well, we thought, again, we had a fully agreed upon document, and that everyone had signed, but there were a couple of things that we had to go back and clarify with the union. And so, I don't know what to say other than, I feel we're just about there, and...
Do you know what more we need to seal that gap at this point?
Pardon?
What do we need at this time to seal that gap, to make...
Well, I know on our side, and I can't certainly speak for the council, there has been concern that because this was a messy, kind of a messy process, that, and because we came to two MOUs regarding the tuition reimbursement and regarding the part-time ordinance employees in that department, we wanted them kind of all tied up in a bow together, and each document referred to each other. In other words, the ratified contract referred to the MOUs, and the MOUs referred to the ratified contract. And that seems to be the sticking point in terms of getting this agreement through the door.
So, Councilwoman Bazey?
I'm still, okay, obviously, okay, you just told us the status.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we were told on two separate occasions, one, a contract appeared in front of this council.
It did.
The new one. We were told that it was complete, so obviously, it's not, according to what you just said.
Well, I mean, our position is, all the money has been paid to the employees. They've suffered no detriment whatsoever in terms of pay, benefits, job responsibilities. It's just fine turning that language. Still, it is our position, there is a ratified contract, but there is, there are some lingering issues that we haven't been able to fully integrate into the contract.
Yeah, if I may, I've had a fair amount of involvement in this particular matter, and what Ms. Ray O'Donnell has indicated is accurate. The point of basically doing the additional negotiation has been to essentially try to work out the differences and say, "Look, we believe there's a ratified contract. You don't, if we resolve these issues with you, then everyone will be in agreement. We have a ratified contract, and we'll be done." And that's the real issue. And as Beth has indicated, indeed, it seems like the issue is that they won't allow for there to be what we would call tiebaring or linkage, to make sure that everyone is in agreement, that if there is an agreement, it includes these MOUs that are, we've been told are acceptable, but for some reason, no one will agree to all of them being linked together in one document, and it makes no sense, frankly.
Can they be referenced to the main document as separate pieces of paper, and do it that way?
And also in the main document as well.
We were trying to do that.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
Memo of understanding?
Correct.
MOU is a memo of understanding.
No, I just needed clarification. I'm sorry, because, I mean, it was mentioned a couple meetings back, you know, when I brought up the issue with the TPOAM contract, you know, the mayor says, "No, we're done. You know, it's already been signed, it's finished." So, I just needed a clarification, because, you know, you talked to various people, they said, "No, we're not done." So, you can hear, keep hearing...
Well, I will grant you this, it's been a messy process, and just coming together with all these multiple meetings, and really hammering off the language, it's still our position all along. We have negotiated a contract that the financial benefits have incurred to all the employees with the benefits. There's just some lingering language issues, really, that...
Now, just before we go any further, can I have you move over there? You're blocking the camera. She's trying to film around you. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
If I can just say one thing for clarification, because it's our position, we have an agreement, and if that was not the position, correct me if I'm wrong, all the employees would have to give back all their money.
That's correct.
So, that is my official position.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Abdullah?
So, I just want to get a clarification on this, in the plain English version of this. We had an understanding, we voted on this, and I think it was November, if I'm not mistaken, maybe it was October?
I believe it was December.
Yeah, it was late last year.
December 2017, correct.
Not to rehash old things.
Yes.
But I'm very confused by this, why we're in this situation right now, because we signed, we agreed as a council, and everything was okay, and then we know there was a situation where they said, "No, we hadn't signed it." Yes, we had, yes, we did sign it. No, we didn't.
I can go over that, too.
But we are now, I mean, I'm just telling you honestly, and I negotiate contracts for a living, and I realize they're not as complex as these, clearly. But to be here today, honestly, in late October, from almost a year ago, and it's still not done for something that was supposed to be done, over with, everybody's in agreement, even if there was an issue later on, it still doesn't make sense in my brain that we are here today, almost a year later, either somebody's not doing good negotiations, or, I mean, it seems such a simple process, because we were, even if, I mean, it was signed, we agreed and everything, right, which is supposed to be at 100%, but let's pretend hypothetically, it was at 95%, and it was still that 5% that you guys and the union were not in agreement on. It still should not take for those little bits and pieces this long, and this is with due respect to you and the union, so maybe both sides, I'm not sure. I'm not involved in negotiations directly. But it makes no sense that we are here today, late in October, and it's still not a done situation. I know you said they're getting all their benefits, pensions, et cetera. That's great. That's good. I mean, that's what we want. But, I mean, we could go round and round with this, and honestly, I'm just telling you honestly, looking at it, it looks like we're going to probably be here again, a month, maybe two, maybe three later. I just don't get why we're there a year. I mean, it just makes no sense.
No, I, we have been, I can understand.
But why are we even negotiating, I mean, no matter what you negotiate, it doesn't take a year. Like I said, hypothetically, it was 5% that we're in disagreement on, just hypothetically, without knowing what the details are, because I know some things you can't discuss that were part of negotiations. Why are we here a year later, almost, and it's still not done? So, either somebody's not doing good negotiations, or one side or the other just doesn't want to get it done, because it doesn't make sense. It's just not logical. If we said this to a third grader, they would say it's not logical that we are here today, almost a year later. And honestly, I'm just telling you myself, I'm disappointed in people that are negotiating on both sides, that we are even here today. It doesn't make sense. I'm trying to make sense of it, but I can't make sense of it.
Well, again, I feel your frustration. I'm frustrated as well. I'm sure the union is as well. I think if our side could be assured that the contract, which I feel we have it, and the MOUs would all be passed, I think we would all be happy, and we would walk away from this table with a fully signed agreement.
Councilwoman...
Councilman Muscat, please.
Go ahead.
Well, no, we have a ready thing to shoot.
There is something that was raised by Councilman Abdullah, and I think that that's the case. Without going into too much detail, and not to end up doing something that might be counterproductive, my sense is, is that we have a real problem with nibbling, which I'm sure you're familiar with as a negotiating technique. We get to a certain point, all of a sudden, a little bit more has to end up being given, a little bit more has to end up being given. And I basically told the business agent, as far as I'm concerned, this was, it seems we have a real problem with nibbling, and he turned red and walked out of the room, which I consider to be, and I negotiate for a living, too. A good portion of my time is negotiating, and I've never seen anyone react to someone basically saying, "Look, this I consider to be a problem with this." So, I think that that's part of the difficulty, is that someone doesn't want a deal to actually be done, and it's not...
He took the words out of my mouth. That's why I was just about to say.
And the thing is, is we're making, we've made a number of other changes, things that were already believed to have been in place for, like, I think, over a year, and then we end up basically being in a position where now this is being brought up. And then we try to work with it, because we want to get this done, and then we're sitting here, it's not good enough. And then we sit here and say, "Look, we've had a problem with this, you know, process always moving. We want to end up tiebaring these things. We want to make sure that everything is done at one time. We don't want to end up having some moving part, or for you to say, 'No, we didn't agree to the MOU. We want it all done.'" And then we're told that that's not acceptable for some reason we can't end up figuring out, because I'm sure you've done any number of agreements, if you have an addendum or something like that. Things refer to each other, and they all get done, and everyone is fine, and we don't worry about it.
Thank you.
That's what's weird here.
Councilman Muscat, please.
First of all, I apologize for passing above there. I don't know if you can tell me, what are we sticking on right now? What's the points that we're stuck on right now?
As Mr. Miyake just indicated, it would be tiebaring the two MOUs to the...
Which ones are those? Which MO...
Yeah.
What are they?
It would be the tuition reimbursement and the language regarding the part-time ordinance workers.
Okay, now, part-time ordinance workers, do we or do we not have a policy in a city about part-time employees as far as our charter's concerned?
Yes.
Do we? I believe there's something in our charter about part-time employees.
Okay.
And it should be followed that way?
I would defer to Mr. Miyake on that point.
Yeah, we have provision in the charter with regard to classified service and unclassified service.
So then, if we follow that, we should, this should just be all put away?
Not necessarily, because when you end up dealing with something that is negotiated, you can actually do things that are...
What's the charter for?
Well, yeah, we should be following the charter.
...end up, paraprevails. Things end up being negotiated that are not part of the charter. You end up having residency requirements long before the law had ended up changing that were eliminated by virtue of collective bargaining. This is very...
I understand that part. I understand that part about residency, and the things that were, the courts had done away with. But we have something in our charter about part-time employees only working a certain amount of time.
Yeah, but I guess, I haven't heard this from, come from anyone, so I'm kind of unclear where this, no, 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 no. I haven't heard this in negotiations, so I'm not sure why it's actually being brought up now, and it's unclear to me why that would end up being relevant to the union with regard to this.
Well, I'm hearing it from the people we hire to negotiate the contract from, that we have a situation with part-time, the language for part-time employees in a contract and tuition reimbursement. To me, if we refer to our charter for one of them, that should go away immediately.
Councilman, we had an MOU that was supposed to be, in substance, acceptable to the union. If that's acceptable to the union, and the only holdup is that they won't tiebar things together, then it strikes me that raising this issue, if it's raised by them, is a way to try to break down the process, as opposed to trying to get the deal done, and to try to change things in terms of negotiations, as opposed to trying to finalize things in negotiations. And that's what I have a problem with. My sense is, is that there is a difficulty, because people don't want to tiebar things, because they want to nibble and try to end up getting further concessions from the city with respect to stuff.
We put seven people here to vote on a contract, and we're at a big disadvantage here, trying to vote on something that we're not part of. We're hearing one side and the other side. We're, we're put in a bad position here. I don't know what's going on inside negotiations. I hear stories. I hear it from you, I hear it from them, I hear it from whatever. I don't know what the truth is.
Well, I'm happy to answer your questions. I haven't talked to you directly, but I think that we've succinctly kind of collapsed everything and told you the status of our negotiations at this point.
We just told about the language for the part-time, and then now the Corporation Council, correct me if I'm wrong, just said, he just, now, first time he heard it. So, what, so...
That's not, that's not what I said.
That's not, I don't believe that's what he said. Honestly, they...
That's what I heard him say, that this is the first you heard of it.
Then let's, I'm not sure what you're saying, Councilman. Basically, what it comes down to is this. The MOU is supposed to be done in terms of the substance. Both MOUs are supposed to be done in terms of the substance. The only sticking point that has been conveyed to Ms. Ray O'Donnell is that they will not tiebar these things. Other than that, they should be perfectly fine. When pressed as to why they can't be tiebarred, we are told, "I just won't do that." If I got that right, Ms. Ray O'Donnell?
Yes. I've been informed by Mr. Lamontagne that, basically, he thinks we're done, except for tying the MOUs to the contract. That's what he told me.
So, what does he want done with them?
He doesn't, I know, he's not here tonight. I can't explain why he's not here, but that, he just, he indicated to me, we cannot, we want the contract to go first, and then the MOUs, and we cannot tie the two documents together.
And when you see that, that suggests that someone is looking at trying to renig, all right? If someone told me, you know, "Just trust me, I'm going to end up doing this after you agree to this other contract," I don't know why I would end up ever doing that, and I don't know why I would ever expect an opposing party to end up doing something along those lines.
But who's responsible for the letters of understanding?
We came to those agreements. They were long, hard, fat-out negotiations. We both came to them together, both sides. We drafted them together.
So, the wording of the, of these...
Yes, both MOUs, we drafted them together.
May I have a follow-up question? I'm sorry, just to...
I have no clue on what the hell's going on.
What Councilman Muscat just said. May I, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I know you have an order, but it's follow-up to his.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just real quick, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, what has changed since this email?
I don't know what you're referring to.
September 7th, oh, no, I'm sorry, yes, September 7th, 2018, this was sent from Mr. Lamontagne. It says, "I saw your email. There's no way I'm signing it. The direct connection of the MOU regarding part-timers and part-timers, the part-timers is not acceptable."
That's what we've been talking about.
What's changed since that time?
That, we're sort of at a standstill.
So, why are we prepared to even talk, I mean, why would we approve this document? Because the other question I have, and I can wait if Madam Chair wants me to wait or continue, but the signature page 87, I'd like to know who signed that, because it has the union representation, and I don't know if anybody's officially here on their behalf. But with that, I'm not prepared until every page is initial or signed.
Oh, I absolutely agree with you on that. Both sides have talked about, every union member or all their bargaining team, as well as the city's team, will be signing each page of this document together.
Okay, that still takes us back to this item. Okay, Councilman Abdullah?
So, if, since in this case, obviously, I mean, since in this case, you guys can't come to a conclusion, and I don't know who's got what agenda and why, you know, all parties aren't coming together, because usually, you know, you do some sort of compromise, and you agree, and you move on. As you know, there's probably thousands of contracts negotiated between corporations and attorneys and what have you, per city, nevertheless, obviously, in the country, and they all get worked out. I have, in my experience, never seen something like this. We're not talking about, in my business, I'm talking about, just even reading in the papers, you never hear of stuff like this in any union personally. So, I'm just telling you personally. So, question. Would it not make sense, maybe, to get a third party right now to join in on this, and is there possibly, maybe, possibly an arbitrator, a retired judge, whatever, to make a decision, and you guys agree prior to that, that whatever decision they make, that you will move forward with that, and then just go that way? Because, you know, as Council Gary Miyake just mentioned, I mean, this can go, if somebody wants, if that's what's happening, based on what you said, nibbling, and I'm familiar with the term, you know, if that's what happens, yeah, I mean, it could go on and on and on and on and on and on forever, you know, negotiations. So, is a third party, either arbitrator, retired judge, whatever can be done, to where both parties agree that that's the direction we're going to go, and whatever decision that third independent party makes, we'll move forward with? Is that at all a possibility or legal?
Well, I will tell this body that we have been working with a third party.
Who's that?
His name is Mr. Strasberg. He's from the state of Michigan.
You see the individual who's typing on the email, which Councilman Muscat...
But then I'm blunt, with all due respect, that hasn't worked. Okay? Due respect to him, whatever it is, it hasn't worked. So, is it possible to get a different third party to get this, I mean, it's, I mean, all there is right now left is these two, and I don't want to call them little issues, because I don't want to belittle them.
Right, they're important issues.
But it's two issues. Okay, I mean, they're important issues, but if people compromise, just like we do in a family, just like people do in corporations, just like people do in life, just compromise and move on. If we're not going to compromise, it sounds like we're not, because it sounds like this thing just keeps dragging. I mean, I'm sick of hearing about it, honestly. You know, we've heard about this for about a year. Is it not, to me, common sense to get a third-party arbitrator, a different third party, again, with due respect to the gentleman, to make a decision, and then we move with whatever decision they make, where it's not Party A or Party B, it's whatever that third party decides, we agree previous to starting, that whatever decision he makes or she makes, we're going to move forward with that, to get this thing done already? Because it just makes no sense that we're still dragging it.
No, I hear what you're saying. It sounds very reasonable. I would feel remiss in not talking to Mr. Lamontagne about that.
Of course, all parties have to agree.
Right, absolutely. I mean...
Are you okay with it?
Well, I'd have to talk with my team. I have no idea what they would say at this point.
They're hired by us to negotiate.
Would be, it doesn't make, with all due respect, it doesn't make sense to me that we shouldn't be able to resolve things.
But it hasn't worked, Gary.
But here's the point, and I would be willing to share in a closed session specifically why I think it hasn't worked. I won't say it in an open session.
Understandable.
And it has, you know, it has nothing to do with how we negotiate, or who we have as a mediator, or whatever else, or our willingness to try to compromise. Mayor has really tried to compromise regularly on this, has really given us very clear direction to want to end up getting this done. We've been working very hard on that, to the degree I've been in a number of sessions, and that's been the approach.
All right, watch this. Crystal ball. I know nobody can predict the future, but crystal ball, just hypothetically, prediction. What do you think this thing is going to be done?
Frankly, I think that the ball is in the court of the union at this point.
But you just mentioned they have...
I think what we've said, it does not change anything substantive.
But you mentioned, for whatever reason, they don't want to finish it. They're nibbling, they're whatever.
That points to the idea that, then, the idea of not being willing to agree to something, which is a very common practice, is just another form of nibbling.
But then, based on that theory, this thing's not going to happen, not this week, not next week, not a month from now, probably.
There's ways, there are two ways in which it might be able to happen, which I would not end up saying in an open session.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I don't get this. I'm looking at the MOU here, and all it's got here is about the tuition.
Okay.
There's nothing about...
I have another one in my packet over there, if you'd like to see it.
This one has nothing to do, oh, I mean, the one I have here has got nothing about the part-time people.
Would you like to see mine?
Yes, please.
You probably should have had this meeting set up for a closed session for part of
it, and then we could have...
Council Chair?
Councilman...
Councilman Abdullah made a recommendation about a third party, and, you know, you guys said you had a third party, but obviously, that third party had no authority at all, otherwise, to make a decision. They were just, what were they doing, just sitting there, listening?
Well, that, Mr. Strasberg, in fairness to him, was facilitating, and he didn't, we did not give to him authority to impose an agreement, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need to take this, we need to do that. Get someone, have someone, I mean, real...
Impartial.
Like, this next week, find someone, next meeting, give them the authority to make the judgment, and then get this thing done. I mean, this is, you know what, I got a big, I wrote on my notes, a big dollar sign, you know, because you know how much attorney fees this is costing the city? I mean, if I asked someone, then they knew it'd probably blow our minds over this contract. And this is, I mean, we've had contracts in the past. Have you been involved with contracts in the past?
Yes, I have.
And what's the longest one lasted before?
I'd have to say this is, this is a long one.
Yeah, and what's, and it's just over two little things? I mean, there's something wrong here. We need a third party with authority to come in, like Councilman Abdullah said. I mean, I have no objection to that.
I know.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Caston?
Well, can you explain a little bit about how the collective bargaining process works, and about what goes to binding arbitration and what doesn't, and, you know, about the, maybe there's some nibbling, maybe there's some buyer's remorse, and is it fair to say that this agreement is 98% done?
I believe that, yes, I do believe that. I mean, anytime, and how this whole thing got started way back in January was, the union, if you will recall, had filed a draft unfair labor practice charge against the city. And so, from that point, we really, we met with their council at the POAM offices, and we really worked diligently to craft the language that, to come to that understanding of what the actual language is we disagree upon, and what language we can agree upon. The city made many concessions, just to get the thing done, and we've whittled it, whittled it down to this point. Either side could have proceeded with, and I'm not going to speak for the union, but the city could have even have filed a ULP against the union, but we didn't want to do that. We wanted to try to craft this agreement and try to forge this agreement.
And shouldn't a member of the union be here, someone speaking for the union? Shouldn't they be scheduled to be here?
I can't speak to that. I was asked to come.
Yeah, and I would, I would think that it would be, this is kind of an unusual, I don't think I've ever dealt with a collective bargaining agreement in this kind of context before, and I would understand if they did not have counsel present, or did not have someone present as a representative, why they would be hesitant to say anything, because technically speaking, there are grievances outstanding here. Anything that ends up being said here could potentially be used against either party, and frankly, in a certain sense, the city has, with two lawyers here, potentially an advantage with respect to some of this stuff. For example, they've taken a position in a grievance that they're relying on the contract, which hasn't ended up being approved, but they're also taking positions that are inconsistent with it. For example, they're trying to grieve something under the new agreement, but they're saying that there's no agreement. I mean, if someone got up here from the union, I would probably want to end up asking them a bunch of questions about that, and that would raise what we call an estoppel argument in lawyer speak, which would basically be a very persuasive argument, if it ever goes to an arbitrator.
Councilman Abdullah?
So, I want to get a clarification. So, you mentioned there was two items that are left. One of them was part-time employees in ordinance. So, explain to me what the issue is specifically, in terms of part-time employees in ordinance?
Well, originally, when we started negotiating, we wanted, because of the, it's my understanding, from the needs of the ordinance department, and all of the cases in the city, and the support needed for court, there was, we suggested four part-time ordinance officers to suggest with the operational needs. And that was one of the things the union strongly said that they did not agree with. So, that is one of the things that we really came together and worked with Mr. Strasberg on, and we, in the MOU that I gave to Mr... on, and we, in the MOU that I gave to Mr. Muscat, we reduced that desire on the city's part to have four people down to two people, and then eventually, one part-time person.
So, the union wanted them full-time, I presume?
Correct.
Okay.
And we all, both the union's side and the management's side, I wish we could make copies of this, all signed on the language. I don't think the language, I hate to say anything, but I thought we all had an agreement on the language.
Okay, so what's it down to now, today, right now as we speak?
In terms of the number of people in the ordinance department?
Yeah, I mean, is that the main issue?
I, I don't-
I'm trying to clear, I'm trying to get a clear mind as to where we're at and why we're here, here or later. And so far, I still don't get it. I'm not trying to negotiate this.
My understanding is that that's not the, it's not the issue, though.
Right, right. I'm going to ask everybody to be recognized before they speak.
Okay, well, Council Chair, may I be recognized?
Counsel.
Thank you. Basically, it's my understanding, it's not a question of the language or the substance at this point, it's purely a matter of tiebarring with regard to that.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so you're in agreement on the number of people, whether they're part-time or full-time, you're, both parties are in agreement, right?
That is my understanding, yes.
Maybe I'm nuts, I don't know.
So, I guess, I guess my take-
So, then the second question, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, so that clarifies that. But I don't get why we're not in agreement, but it clarifies it at least. Next question, reimbursement of tuition slash education.
Yes.
So, for an average employee, so I could get a perspective of this, for an average employee, if I'm a city employee-
Yes.
On average, how much average, because I know some may be more than others, on average, how much tuition would I have, you know, would I go for per year? How much, I mean, what's the dollar amount? Are we talking about $50, $5,000, $400?
No, I would defer to the Human Resources Department for that specific number.
So, it depends where you go, with the-
But on average, I'm trying to get, obviously, it's two, you know, two-
You know, a bachelor's program is different than a-
Right, but what I'm saying, okay, so, just to clarify, that, okay, see, a bachelor's program is a whole different-
And I don't know how much, you know, the fees are associated, sometimes there are lab fees, sometimes there are books.
Yes.
The reason I'm asking, if the issue is reimbursement for tuition for a bachelor's degree, that's a whole, obviously, actually where that could be, you know, not easy.
It could be bachelor's.
I'm just trying to clarify.
It could be, it has been hurt.
So, it's not like a specialty course, one-time deal, $100, $200 type of thing? You're talking about full-blown education?
Very few general government employees utilize this program. And in fact, I thought we all came to an agreement on the language.
Yeah, well, this is the other-
So, there is, I know you're, I have the same difficulty understanding. I don't think it's a language problem, Councilman. It's a problem of how this all gets packaged together, which is confusing.
And that's a good way to put it, how it gets all packaged together for you.
So, you're in agreement?
I am agreeing with that, yes.
Okay, so my question is, what I'm taking on this is, you're just trying to figure out how to tie all three of these issues together, the contract, the part-time employees, and the tuition reimbursement.
Yeah.
And that's the only problem. Everybody's agreeing on it, it's just how to tie it in.
How to package it and get it done, move it across the goal line.
It doesn't even seem like it should be that difficult. If you've got everything written out the way it should be, you know, it shouldn't be that hard to figure out-
It shouldn't be that hard, right.
Because, I mean, how many different options do you have to tie them together?
It shouldn't be that difficult. But I don't, I don't have the union counterpoint here with me tonight, and, you know, honestly, sure.
Yeah, and that was what I was going to add, and the mayor and I were just doing a little sidebar. Again, substantively, the language with regard to the tuition reimbursement has been worked out, as we understand it. Now, it's just a matter of tiebarring it, and we're at a loss as to why we can't tiebar. It's just, and when I asked Ms. Ray O'Donnell, what's his objection? And she's indicated he didn't express one, he just can't expect his membership to do that.
But that's where the third party comes in.
We got Councilwoman Wensel.
Uh, Ms. Miyaki, can you tell us exactly how the city looks, how they want to tiebar it in, in layman's terms?
The language, there's language in each one of these items that basically says, this is contingent on this one being affected, and this one being affected, and this one being affected.
Correct.
Essentially, that's-
They refer to each other, the documents refer to each other.
They refer to each other and say, this is not effective until all three of them are effective, and then all three of them are effective, and we're all go, we're fine, we're done.
And just to add, if I'm incorrect, correct me, Mr. Strasberg, because when we ended up in these issues, I thought he was the one that said, okay, if you can't get it in the original agreement, let's use the MOU.
Yeah.
So, he actually offered a solution that will hopefully would be acceptable, and I want to get it done, I said, fine.
Yeah, he came up with the MOU, that if it just, it could not be put into the body of the contract, Mr. Strasberg, the third-party mediator for Merck, came up with this tactic, this approach.
So, do you, where do you have it, where the union said they wouldn't accept it? Do you have that in writing, or it's just all verbal?
I probably, I did not bring an email from Mr. Lamontagne tonight, but it's, I don't remember if he told me that on the phone or if he sent it in an email.
Because this, go ahead.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
I can't think of anything else, but this feels like Groundhog Day, the movie.
I don't remember that movie, I'm sorry.
I mean, we've had, you know, where it's like, repeat over and over, we've had this, I'm sorry, but we've had this conversation multiple, 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 multiple times. So, again, another crazy thought, why don't we do like they do in the Congress, where we sit you guys all in here, lock up the doors, nobody's getting out, bring in pizza, until it gets resolved?
Oh, pizza.
You know, I mean, I, it's, it seems, it just seems crazy that you're all in agreement, from what you're telling me, I was trying to get the bottom of it, but you're all in agreement on the terms, and just tiebarring is the only issue, but I'm sorry, but there's, I'm not implying you, but somebody out of the party is not telling us everything, because it doesn't make sense. Because like I said, it was, we had this conversation.
As an officer of the court, I've told you everything, I mean-
Okay. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I do just want to chime in on that, because I guess my concern is that we don't have someone in official capacity on behalf of the union. So, really, we're still just hearing one side, and I asked a question about the signature page. This document, from my understanding, is not ratified by the union yet.
We need to know why, where we are with that.
There, if it's not ratified, it's still, the collective bargaining piece is in place. There are, you know, we have these question marks all over the place. It's now been, like you said, I mean, I've lost track how long it's been.
One year, one year.
It's time to get these sides, there's something missing here, in my opinion, just because, again, I can't even get my questions answered, because we're missing the other side. Why is the other side not part of this?
It's one year from when we had an agreement already. Remember, we agreed.
Well, we agreed on something that wasn't approved by the union, wasn't ratified.
I got a question for Mr. Miyaki. Is it possible we could have a closed session with everybody and discuss it openly?
We wouldn't have a basis to go into a closed session, because, again, the basis for the closed session is to discuss strategy with respect to bargaining, and they're on the other side, so it doesn't really make sense.
Yeah, but how do we know what the other side, as Councilwoman needs to explain? She said, she said that, okay, we're hearing this side here, but we're not hearing the union's side.
Well, Ms. Ray O'Donnell could end up sending a communication to Mr. Lamontagne after you expressed to us what the communications, what you want us to ask, and then she could communicate that over to their representative.
Well, we need to know the status from the union, what is the holdup. We heard your story, but we don't hear their story.
But they could respond to the email that contains your questions with respect to that.
Well, I mean, we're just wasting time here.
Okay, well, I guess at this time, there's really nothing we can do to move further, except maybe encourage you to get with Mr. Lamontagne and get stuff in writing, so we can see what exactly is going on between the two different sides and see where we're exactly at.
I will definitely do that, and I, again, I can't speak for him, I would not pretend to speak for him. And I know he feels that we're just about there also, but I would only say, from his standpoint, I think he has indicated to me that the MOUs are separate, and just, they're just separate, they cannot be referred to in the main agreement, that that's all-
Can you still do it that way, do the main agreement?
Pardon?
Can you still do it that way, do the main agreement and then do the-
You can do anything you want.
MOU. Then why don't we just do it that way to get it done with?
Well, it, I don't know, I mean, there was-
If they reneg.
Because-
Negotiating against ourselves.
I mean, we're, again, for operational needs, for the ordinance department in particular, that is such an important provision for their work, to have it, to have it accomplished.
City Council Chair.
Come on, Mr. Miyaki?
Yeah, we would recommend against that, just from the standpoint that essentially, we get into another this concession, and frankly, we don't understand, there doesn't seem to be any reasonable reason why they can't end up doing this and tiebarring. And my other recommendation might be that Ms. Ray O'Donnell would end up trying to get emails that would end up talking about the tiebarring issue, and maybe we could forward those to the administration, to the mayor, and to the council, so that you can see what the communications were, to maybe give you a better notion of what it is that we've been facing.
That might work. Okay, Councilwoman Dazey?
Yeah, I mean, also, what I like to see, even when everything, everybody's in agreement, I mean, other than just initiating each page, as we have seen in the past, I like to get a confirmation from the union that, yes, this here is the actual contract that we need to sign on, because we want to-
That's vital.
Because we want to prevent an issue that happened from last year-
Right.
Which we weren't here. And also, another issue that it was put on the agenda, and it got pulled at the same meeting, so we want to try to prevent that as well. So, whatever goes in front of us at the next time, it has to be concurred by the union, and we want it, we want a confirmation from the union, and I advise to have, each page has to have some type of signature, or an addendum, or some type of revision, something.
Right, no, I think, Mr. Lamontagne and I have talked about that, and we're actually in agreement with you on that.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilman Muscat.
One more thing.
Okay, then we'll wrap it up.
Going back with Councilman Abdullah, when he said lock everybody in room, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not agreeable to arbitration, binding arbitration?
No, no.
I mean, we've done it in the past, haven't we?
Well, with an arbitration, you're normally looking at something that you would consider to end up being an issue to be actually arbitrated, decided. This is supposed to be a voluntary process, and the difficulty is, is that we believe that we have things voluntarily set. The arbitrator would need to end up having a standard by which he would end up making, he or she would end up making a decision. In this situation, there's nothing in terms of a standard like that. In other words, it would be like saying, well, we think that the interpretation of this word means three employees, and we think that the interpretation of this word means two employees. Okay, then the arbitrator can look at that word, the context of that word, whatever it might be, whatever the standard is that's in dispute, the arbitrator would be able to interpret it. We don't have that here.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. At this time, I've got someone I think wants to get up to the microphone, and I'm going to give her time, too.
I apologize, I'm Cheryl Frank. I'm not here to take on argument or questions. I don't mean, the union means no disrespect to this body, to the mayor, anybody, but there were a few things that, Mr. Miyaki brought up a point, that there are limited things at which I can even say, because we are in current negotiations, and we have several grievances outstanding. I'm not an attorney. You have two attorneys, they have two attorneys here, so whatever I say can potentially hurt us. However, I think I'm confident to say that something was said earlier, that none, no one in the union is being harmed, and full pension benefits are being utilized, and that is not true. The pension things are not able to be used by our membership. So, I just wanted that clarification. Monetary, correct. What was negotiated was everything's in play, but not the pension items. Like I said, I just had surgery a few days ago, so I'm not here for argument, but one thing that I can't sit back and allow anybody to get an impression of is that our union is nibbling. I won't accept that term, I won't, that is absolutely absurd. We have negotiated in good faith since day one, and I hope my reputation can, you can trust me on that. But again, I can't, I have notes and notes to bring back to our attorney, but I'm here, and like I said, I just want to express that this is in no way disrespect of the union. We want a finished deal, a done deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Abdullah?
If you don't mind, if I could ask, can you clarify a little bit on that? Because there was mention that, you know, and I'm not trying to negotiate this-
Sure.
For clarification, I just wanted to get a clarification from you. You just mentioned that the pension situation is not the same, is that correct?
Our members that are eligible-
I want a clarification on that, please.
Yes, are not able to take advantage of the negotiated buying years, the, I'm sorry.
Purchase of service credit.
Yeah.
And that is correct.
Yeah.
The pension board will not recognize it until there is a signed contract, and there is not a contract that's been signed by both parties, as I understand it.
Correct.
So, that's the reason.
Will it be retroactive once it is signed?
Well, except these people wanted to before and, and-
You can't retroactive that.
No.
You can't retroactive that.
At this point, I think everybody, we're all set then, at this point, to move on?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you feel better.
Mediator.
At this time, we're going to move on to our-
Are we going to, are we going to address the?
Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to artistic lawn service.
Thank you.
Okay, you know what, I'll allow public comment on just this one item here, and then we'll go on to artistic, because I don't think there's going to be public comment there anyways. Go ahead, if you want to do public comment before we move on, because the next one, I don't think there'll be any. And the limit is three minutes. Name and address, please.
I just have a three copy of federal and state law. I'm going to try to split them between the chair.
Is that Act 196 that you pulled? Oh, yes, I have that noted. Thank you for bringing it, I have that noted, Act 96, 196.
About, I want to say something about the contract. We do have a charter, I believe, in this city, and if we allow one time somebody to violate that charter, it will be violated time after time after time. So, we do have provisions in the charter about the part-time employees. The administration tried before to pass through the budget some jobs for some people, and thank to you that you did not approve that. And I just want to make sure, when we hire people in the city, we hire the best to serve our people. They must take the civil service test, they must obey the law, they must obey the charter. That is number one priority, and you have, right now, the responsibility to make sure that the charter is not violated. And I am surprised that Mr. Miyaki should have said during the negotiation that this violates the charter. It should have never even brought in, or if nobody said anything about it, it doesn't mean, you know, we pass it. Second, the buying of five years, how much this is going to cost the city? Did you see actuary report, how much money it's going to cost the city in the long run? And the compensation of 30% to let people come back to work five days? They gave up between 6% to 10%. Some people did not give 10%. I recommend that they get 10% if they want to come back to work, not 30%, because, again, we don't know how much, I don't, at least myself, know how much it will cost in the long run, the taxpayers. And the law is clear, some people must be excluded, especially the one who negotiated this contract, should be excluded from any benefit from this in the state and the federal law is clear and it's in front of you. And I hope that you recognize what I'm saying and I thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much. Any other comment on the first portion of this study session?
Council Chair, can I just say something?
Council Miyake?
Thank you. Actually, I'm sorry, but I do not recall saying anything violated the charter. I believe what I said is that what's negotiated under para can prevail over the charter. And there is a distinction. In other words, like a residence requirement, residence requirements had to be negotiated even though they were, there were charter provisions in many city charters that were inconsistent with what was negotiated and para prevails. So that was my point. If it was misunderstood or I apologize for not speaking as clearly as I could, Mr. Abdalha.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any further comment? At this time, we're going to move on to the artistic lawn service. This seems to be an issue with a company that is doing city cuts and they only have a contract with us to do ordinance cuts to the city. So it seems to be frustrating for us to be approving something that we know we shouldn't be, but the work has already been done. So at this point, I don't know who would like to open up the discussion.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Dazey?
I specifically, and I do have a problem with, I mean, as the council chair mentioned, there's a, obviously there's a contract to cut ordinance, but not city property. So I do have a problem with anybody, it's not just artistic, cutting city property and that's a DPW function. And again, you know, we've seen a lot of grievances. I don't know which one is which yet, you know, and that's, I'm going to request to start looking at all the grievances that we're paying for and we're approving on the council. So I think from now on, I mean, DPW has to cut the city property and not, you know, another company outsourced.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I wanted to chime in with you, if I may. Fully agree. I would imagine the union does have grievances on this. I don't know why they would not take away work from the union working families, the hardworking families, which I fully respect. If there is a reason, then certainly we've heard different things, but we also have been told about tree cutting and we see that is outsourced as well. If we are going to choose to outsource work in the city to private contractors, I think that there's a bid process that should be used for such. But again, if we keep it in-house, you know, with our, you know, union families, then let's find out what's happening and why.
Yeah, I have a tendency to agree that if we are keeping it in-house, it's fine, but if we outsource it, we need to get, go through the bid process. Because I'm looking at, and this is nothing against artistic, it could be any lawn service. So far this year, we have spent $69,266 to this one particular company to outsource our city cuts that we are able to do in-house. So that's where the issues kind of come from.
That's taking, that's taking all of these right off of these.
And that's just this year, that's not including last fall or anything before the springtime.
Or even on the check registry.
And there is other issues, there is more on the check registry, but it falls below the minimum.
So I just wanted to get a clarification. You're talking about $69,000 for the public cutting or you're talking about including the residents' cutting?
It's for public cutting only. The ordinance cutting is separate.
Separate, okay.
They've been paid a lot more than this, but that was ordinance and that's a whole, that's where their contract is.
Council Chair, when I, when I gave you that number, I added up just what was in front of us, given to us today. So I don't know exactly what was ordinance and what was city.
That's what I'm saying, some of these are reimbursed by the residents.
Oh, okay, I apologize then. I thought you were giving me.
It seemed way high.
Yeah, so I apologize for that. I just want to make that perfectly clear.
Yeah, I was going off what you gave me.
It's just what's off of the backups here.
Right. So in this, there's obviously a lot of residents that are, you know, if a resident doesn't cut their grass, they get charged, but then the city gets reimbursed. So obviously, it's not the $69,000 figure. But I just wanted to address this, a couple of things. I know, and I know he's not the final authority to decide this, but I know our ordinance director, Jack McIntyre, mentioned, I believe the last meeting or the meeting before that, that this was, you know, the contract was extended through the rest of the year and as you know, there may be one, maybe two more, maximum, three more cuts. And I think if I'm not mistaken, Jack, I don't want to speak on your behalf, but I think it's time you agreed that you'd put it out for an RFP to get the new bids out in the spring. Even though me personally, on a personal basis, if a company's doing a good job, I believe in keeping a company. If they're a good job and good pricing, I believe in keeping a company. That's just my personal belief, but I have no problem with getting other bids just to make sure, but it would not make sense to do this right now with winter coming in a couple of weeks. But I did talk with, I did talk with our DPW director, just to get a clarification on this. And unfortunately with this thing, this seems like, you know, very similar to the contract negotiations again, you know, where you hear, you know, one party says this, the other party says that, and only God knows where the real truth is. But nevertheless, according to him, they are offered, okay, there's, there's right now about two to three years worth of trees that need to be trimmed. And he's got right now, at this particular point, according to him, about 10, nine to 10 employees that are doing this. So they're obviously doing a lot of tree type jobs. Therefore, he cannot take them away from that to be able to go cut grass. So when grass gets long in areas that are public, he brings in artistic. Meanwhile, he told me that these same nine to 10 people, and I don't manage his particular department to know, I just have to rely on what he's telling me, these same nine to 10 people have to do this, and I wrote them down when I was talking with them. They have to clean the catch basins, you know, from leaves, they have to do cold patch, they have to do street sweeping to keep, obviously the storms clear, they have to do the tree cutting or trimming, grass cutting in some of the public areas or the ones that they do. And then they got the signs, the no parking signs, which they're putting out right now. And then they've got painting of the crosswalks amongst other things. So with all that being involved, they, he just does not have the, according to him, the man slash woman power to be able to do this and not hire it out. So that's why he hires it out. It's not because he wants to, it just doesn't make economic sense with so many trees that need to be trimmed and taken care of to go ahead and do this with the nine or 10 employees that he has out there. That's, that's his issue on his end.
Councilwoman Muscat?
Well, I believe we just authorized payment for somebody to stripe our streets.
I'm just telling you some of this.
I'm just saying, so we could take that, take that one off the list because we authorize payment for that.
This is per Bill Zimmer.
Well, I want Mr. Blackburn because there's, there's a couple different kind of items dealing with.
I was told he, they were doing, painting the crosswalks.
Yes.
At this time of year, doesn't it seem counterproductive, you know, I mean, you know, cold weather, painting the crosswalks?
We do it for the kids in school.
Yeah, I know, but it shouldn't be done before school starts. It's October. We're painting crosswalks?
Welcome, Mr. Blackburn.
Okay. Yes, there is, there is a amount of employees that do say no. Okay, I'm going to take last week, for example. There's 11 employees in the highway department, six days of the week, Monday through Saturday. Sundays are only for emergencies. So there's 66 potential for yeses, okay? Now, if you take out four people who take a day off, last week, there was 51 potential yeses for overtime. There was only 18 yeses, 33 nos. That's about a third of the employees during the week working overtime. So therefore, these extra things can't get done. I'm not a big fan of contracting, but when they're employees and we don't have the time to do it, then you have no chance but, choice but to contract that stuff out.
I've got a question. Is there a certain guideline that you use when asking the employees for overtime, such as you have to warn them at least four hours before the end of the shift so they can make some kind of arrangements?
No, but they were, everybody was told that we are going to ask every single day. Monday through Saturday, we are going to ask every single day. They should know when they walk into work that day whether they can or cannot work. That should, because they know they're going to be asked. They will be asked sometime during the day. Sometimes our supervisors get busy, sometimes the day gets away from us and it's at the last minute. So sometimes it's later on in the day when they're asked.
So you're saying on Monday, you're going to tell them, we need overtime Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, possibly Saturday. Plan on it. Tell me now if you want to work those days. Or do you ask them on the actual day?
We ask them on the actual day, but on Thursday, we will ask them for Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Because personally, I know when I worked overtime, the more notification you got, the better chance you had of me working that overtime.
Well, they know they're going to be asked every single day. They have been asked every single day for the last five months.
Because I'm thinking like babysitter situations too. If I knew for sure that was a sure thing, I would set up a babysitter and if I knew ahead of time.
Yes, and sometimes that does come into place. There's, there's reasons why people say no. I understand at times there's family commitments, their kid's ball game, whatever it is, but they know we are asking every single day.
Councilwoman Wensel?
Why don't you ask on Monday, sign up for all week? Who wants to work overtime on Tuesday? Who wants to work time on Wednesday? Do it at the beginning of the week instead of waiting for that day.
Because.
If you know they're going to work overtime, have them sign up early.
Some people do take days off during, during, during the week. Some people take the whole week off. It's hard, it's, it's hard to tell. Sometimes, you know, if you wake up and you're sick, you call in sick. Well, yeah, he said, yeah, that day, but he called in sick. It doesn't.
But still, they're supposed to be there full time anyways. If they're missing their eight hours, they're missing overtime too, but you can't plan on the eight hours either. Councilwoman Dazey?
Okay, so in any corporation in the world or any city in the whole world, they have program management. And I've seen multiple jobs posted for anything in any, any job classification. It says you have to have a program management experience. So where's the manage, the, that part in your department? I mean, do you have a list or a schedule? Okay, Monday, this is what we're going to be doing. I mean, I know I, we foresee emergencies coming up, busted lines or whatever. So Monday, this is what we're going to be doing, Tuesday, Wednesday, so, and so forth.
Monday, it's usually, the way it usually works is Monday.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I mean, I don't, I don't need to know exactly what you're doing. I just need to, clarification, does your employees have a list for the entire week? Okay, this is what we're doing, Monday through Friday or through Thursday?
So when they come in Thursday, they know they're going to cut trees and maybe Friday cut grass and Monday clean streets, you know?
Well, no, because of, because of trash days, they know that Monday through Friday, the sweepers are going to be in the trash areas, the tree cutters are going to be in the trash areas. We got a couple of guys right now dedicated to getting up the no parking on trash day signs. That takes time. So the street sweepers and the people that are going to be in the tree crew know that they're going to be somewhere in the trash areas unless there's an emergency tree or something else that needs to be takedown, they may get rerouted. But they don't know what streets or where they're going to be until the supervisor comes out with the jobs in the morning.
But that's not all your employees, that's just specific employees, right?
You don't have a lot of street sweepers, you don't have 11 of the street sweepers, I know that.
How many street sweepers do you have that are in operation, the machines?
I think we have two working and two down right now.
Yeah, I've only seen two different ones out.
So last question, okay. I asked that question before. Does DPW have a grievance against the city or the administration, whatever you want to call it? Do we have a grievance because of the grass cutting?
If the union filed any grievances, that went to Director Zimmer and then went to the mayor, I am not in that mix, so I would not answer that question.
Okay, so we do have, I mean, that's my concern, what I mentioned in the beginning. I do have a problem with anybody cutting their grass. It's a union position for the city. I mean, you know, ordinance is another story.
And my understanding is.
For the city property, it has to be DPW.
But like last week, we have 18 yeses and 33 nos, 51 potential yeses. That does take away from management being able to schedule that anyways.
So the grievance, so the grievance that was probably filed, as was mentioned, it could have been from the ones that said yes, correct?
I have no idea. I can't, I can't comment on that.
My understanding is when you had six employees, you were able to take care of all the grass cutting, all the tree trimming and then the whole list that we've got here. Now you've got 11 employees, so you actually have more people.
There was a time when the highway department was low on employees and we did not cut trees unless it was an emergency. And yes, we were cutting grass, but we weren't cutting trees. And at times, we had tree contractors that were, they specifically worked for us and that was that those only ones they, they worked for was us.
Yeah, wasn't that because our equipment was down though?
No, that was because our guys were cutting grass. They were doing other things. So the employees were allocated doing other jobs rather than tree trimming.
Well, like I say, we've got five more employees now, so those five could probably pick up for the trees that were not getting cut before, is that correct?
But there's also, you also got to take into consideration vacation time, sick time. People do take days off, especially during the summer.
That's always been there though, even with the six employees, so.
But as employees accrue more years of service, their vacation days go up. So as.
Okay, gotcha.
As they get, as you keep the older employees, they accrue more vacation days throughout their tenure of employment.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
So that's what I'm trying to understand to be, the root of the problem is staffing, maybe enough people. And you're right about as you, you have more time, you accrue more time off, but are we planting seeds with new hires and training them up as people will eventually retire and will meet the need? Because what is the need and what does it look like? Because that was my question with staffing, because that's what I keep hearing to be the problem. And I'm looking at, and I've added these up and these are actually what you have included are all public easements and I added them up and forgive me because I hand added it. I'm at $52,666.92, so I could be off a little bit, but I mean, that's just.
One extra employee.
That's one extra employee right there. And then there's benefits.
And we could have full time.
Hold on, you didn't let me finish. I know you want to chime in back there, but please, please be respectful.
Well, no, we need to keep it up here at this point.
Please be respectful. So I wasn't finished, you know, and we have to talk about the longevity and all the other legacy costs. But again, the part of responsible man, I'm not saying you're not responsible, by the way. I'm just saying responsible management is you're always forecasting, like you were saying, Councilwoman Bazi, you have a management plan, you're always training somebody for a new position, you're always planning to replace somebody for an existing position and that's how this works because you're going to have people retiring. And there needs to be a pipeline created. So again, I'm not trying to tell anybody how to do their job, but that's been my experience. And that's what I keep hearing is a staffing resource issue. And that's what I just wanted to add to that conversation.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
Sometimes I can't believe what I hear. I worked in industry my whole life and overtime was part of that industry. And from day to day, we never know what emergency comes up. We could have routine maintenance or we could have massive breakdowns that, that's an emergency that's detrimental to a company making vehicles that has to be fixed. But every Monday, we went in and we saw a list and you signed up for overtime. If you want overtime during the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you put a Y by your name. And now you're available to work every day. It's up to management and if you know you're cutting grass and you are cutting grass, you are trimming trees, you put them scheduled to do that stuff. That's, that's not that difficult to do. It's not difficult. You don't come up to somebody when they're getting their car and say, I need you to cut 50 lots today or whatever it is or trim 10 trees. I'm just saying, even, even within the last hour of the shift. I mean, if guys are know that they're going to work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I'm, I'm going to willing to bet, you're going to have 90% participation. If they already know that they're going to be working, because if they come in Monday, they're going to go home and tell their wife, hey, I'm working Saturday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, dear, so don't make any plans till after four, five o'clock or whatever it is. I see the participation like that all the time.
I cannot speak for the other supervisors, but as, as far as I'm concerned, I either ask first thing in the morning or I ask during their lunch break.
And that's.
Those are the two times I ask, but at times, there's been a few days where the day has gotten away from me because of certain emergencies going, going on and it's two o'clock and it's like, oh man, I forgot to ask. And I'm asking later on in the day.
Everything happens.
Yes.
Stuff happens.
But usually, for the most part, I'm either, for me personally, I'm asking first thing in the morning or by, or by lunch.
I mean, if there's no proper procedure to do this, like overtime, put a list up on Monday morning, have the guys check in. It's their responsibility to go up there and put a yes by their name for every day they want to work. Make it their responsibility then. It takes that responsibility off of you. That way you come say, hey, look at all, nobody signed, nobody signed list.
Yeah, that gives you proof.
And you put, and everybody then is aware of when they're going to work overtime. And if they agree to work overtime and then don't show up, well then maybe they get knocked off the list for the next week or so, that they can't work overtime. I don't know.
Well, that, that, that would be a violation of our contract, so we couldn't go there.
Well, I understand that, but you got to find. I understand that, but you got to find a way to get everybody on board to work overtime in a in a in a proper way that these guys know that they're going to work overtime. I know, I hated to go to work in the last hour and say, hey, you got to work Friday and Saturday. No, I don't. Okay, kind of give me some kind of notice for me to be able to work. But if I knew I was going to work overtime and my name's on a list, it's my responsibility to put that yes by my name. Eliminates you completely out of that responsibility. And now you'll have your manpower. I believe you will have your manpower because you already know you're cutting grass and you know you're trimming trees. You know it by just your own words. We're doing it all the time. So if you're cutting grass all the time and you're trimming trees all the time, you know you're going to need 11 guys. So put them on the list. Monday, Monday, you're on the list. Monday through the whole week, you're on the list.
Councilman Abella?
That's that's simple. Everybody does it.
Councilman Abella?
So I got a question for you. Being that we always need overtime and you're mentioning that not enough people are taking it, does it make sense to maybe add some more employees? Is that something that you feel that you need to be able to resolve this issue? Because at the end of the day, all of our concerns as council people is to make sure that the trees are being cut, you know, trimmed, the grass is being cut, the snow is being shoveled, et cetera, et cetera, and then in doing it at the best, most economical way, obviously for the city, therefore not charging as much to the residents. Is that at all an option? I mean, do you feel like you're understaffed? Is that the issue? Or is that not the case?
Could I say that we could use more employees? Everybody will say they, yes, they can use more employees. But that's not, that's not for me to say. That's up to the mayor to make sure he can fit it within the budget.
And that's what I'm thinking in the next budget.
And if he needs to go to the body for amendment for that kind of stuff, that's done through the mayor's office. I can't, I can't say that. I do know, though, that the human resources director does go out and advertise for, because we just, they just established a list not too long ago, we get maybe 10 people apply here. That's it. You get a couple of people that fail the civil service test. You have a couple of people that fail the background check. Then you get a couple of people that say, no, I don't want to leave my job now. And all of a sudden, the list is gone and human resources has to go through the whole process again. It's not a quick and simple process. And if they don't get a lot of applications, they have to extend it out. Because I know every time when they put out for applicants for labor or for clerical, I had put it on my social media pages and and ask if they have any questions, they can private message me and I get nothing.
So I've got a second question for you. The reason we're using Artistic, and I don't mean them specifically, I'm talking about, you know, we're contracting it out, whether it's Artistic or ABC Company. From an economical standpoint, as DPW is concerned, is it cheaper to use an outside source versus using our union workers? I'm just trying, and I'm not approving or disapproving of this or saying this is good or bad. I'm just trying to understand why we use an outside source specifically.
That was, that decision was done through Director Zimmer. I don't know how much they cost. I don't really delve into those bills. Those bills don't cross my desk. So I can't fully comment on that because that's not within the purview of my job classification.
Okay.
Madam? Well, we should have had Mr. Zimmer here to answer these questions.
Actually, yeah, we should have had Mr. Zimmer here tonight.
I mean, how can we put this guy on a spot? And if he doesn't, you know, if he's standing, Mr. Zimmer should be standing.
I know, I know at the time, Mr. Zimmer was, Director Zimmer was tight, so he piggybacked off the ordinance department bid to cut the grass. And then I think last year, he had a one-year extension. He has a one, a one-year extension, so Director Zimmer piggybacked off that again.
Yeah, see, there was no approval by comp, by by us to piggyback anything off of the other, the ordinance cuts.
Well, I think he used the piggyback instead of going out for bids again and...
See, they're still working with no contract. That's, I mean, no, yeah.
That was also for residential, right?
Right. It was for residential, right, yeah?
Right.
Yeah.
Sure.
There are cities, Dearborn is one of them, that has gone completely out to the contractor to cut all their city properties. They found that they just, you know, similar to what Mr. Blackburn was just saying, they're having staffing issues there too. They just found that it was easier to outsource cutting their grass and it went in that direction. To speak to the point about it being the cost of one employee, you've got to take into account benefits. But you also need to take into account that when this company, ABC, I'm going to call him because I'm worried, I'm really worried about using his name so much because he's a great contractor and does a really good service for the city. And he didn't solicit us, we solicited him, you know, we went to him, so.
Okay.
But you have to also think that it might, that dollar a month might be equivalent of one person. He takes a crew that he pays of six to eight people when he does those jobs with four to six lawn mowers. So it's, it's an apple and orange thing.
Or could we do a couple of part-time people? We seem to like the part-timers.
Just talked about a MOU with part-time.
All right, Councilman Bazey?
Seasonal?
I don't know.
Yeah, seasonal.
Maybe it's still part-time.
I came up with 82,000.
And we got very little response on that.
Okay.
Follow-up. Just a real, who sets the rates when they cut grass? Like, that's not residential or ordinance problems, like the ones that DPW normally would cut easements. Who sets that rate? Who sets the rate that they get paid?
Whatever Bill Zimmer sets up with them, probably based on using other contractors.
Well, see, that's just something that we need to know what the rates are. We should have a fixed rate on what they pay for a certain amount of square footage.
I agree. And I think I said it two meetings ago, I said, look, we've definitely identified that, you know, maybe this is incorrectly, you know, done. I had to go out for bid and I screamed, you guys only extended one year. And I know that Bill Zimmer has indicated that he's going to do the same if he finds that there's a need to continue this. Hopefully, you know, he can figure out something different in staffing. I don't know how to come in front of you and have that discussion with you. But we are close to the end of the season. You know, it all, at this point, it's weather, sunshine, and rain is what's, and frost is what's going to play a part in how long this actually goes. Typically, it just goes to the end of October, although some years if we've had a lot of rain like we've just had now, we might go a week or maybe even two weeks into November. I know next week, the ordinance department, all they're going to do next week is grass blast. That's what we call it. Where they're going to get their cars and they're just going to try to get all the final grass violations out there so that we can be done with grass for the season.
Okay.
And and it's, you know, like I, I had complaints about the median on Telegraph between Ann Arbor Trail and Warren. I called the county. County told me that's not theirs. They contract the city to do it. I called the city and they don't know who's supposed to cut that grass. Why doesn't anybody know what we're supposed to cut and what we charge, get charged? We should have a flat rate fee for everything. If we're going to go to a contractor, a flat rate fee. This comes in all the time. Not to say they don't do a good job, because they do do a good job. Hey, go out there and cut the grass. They go out there and cut the grass. But I got to know what they want to charge for.
Council chair? Mr. Yackey?
In response to Councilman Muscat's point, I think that Telegraph, we have a contract with MDOT in order to basically...
Correct. But are we cutting the grass? Are we receiving the money to paying a contractor to do it? Or are we receiving the money and and spending it on a, an outside vendor? And then what are, are they charging more than what our contract is for with MDOT? Or?
I can tell you much less than the MDOT. I've had discussions with Bill Zimmer about this. So the arrangement with MDOT is, and Mike could probably speak to this too, my understanding is, we do six, they do six, kind of thing. Like, we do, you know, we trade that off with them. Bill Zimmer has said, now, parts of that, the contractor that he's going with can't do it because there's a liability that MDOT won't extend to a contractor. So some of those, Bill Zimmer's group has to cut it because MDOT carries the liability on that and they won't extend it if he's taking out a subcontractor to do it. So what what that negotiated crisis between us and MDOT, the contractor...
Well, as long as we're doing it, I'm fine with it. But I'm just saying, we're not going to take money from MDOT and then give it to somebody else and at a different rate.
Go ahead.
So that's all I'm trying to figure out there.
Councilman Bazey?
Again, in conclusion, I hope, I mean, it was a consensus that there should be a sheet maybe Monday to allow your guys to sign up for the entire week if they need overtime. And the second thing, we, I mean, I can speak for myself. I'd like to see that before we keep approving for city property to be cut other than DPW. Because I still have a problem with somebody else cutting it and I see a grievance. And as, you know, Mr. Muscat can probably vouch to that, when there's an grievance by a union, this can cost us double the price that we're currently paying. We're paying a contractor to cut, but if that grievance goes through, we can still pay the same amount.
No, because...
Well, no, you can't tell me that because I've seen it.
No, listen, listen, listen. Because it is, when I was in the union, I was the president. I was where the current president is now. I was in that position. That is a policy grievance. Because everybody was asked to work overtime, nobody lost any money. Therefore, there is no mo, I haven't seen the grievance, but I almost guarantee you, there's no monetary reimbursement for anybody in there. It's just a straight-up policy grievance with no money attached to it.
It's called full utilization of the workforce.
Do you have proof that they refused the overtime? Because that's what you're going to need to protect yourself.
I got sheets right here when they say yes, yes and no every single day. That's why I was able to tell you last, last week, I have 51 possible yeses. There's 18 yeses and 33 nos.
Now, how long have you been using that?
My, my department, I've been doing it since late June.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
So at the end of the day, so we should not, according to what was just said, we should not see any money paid from the city for grievances for the cost, for the, for the grass cutting. Is that a true statement?
I haven't seen the grievances, but my past...
I mean, anybody else from the administration?
On my past personal experiences from being on that side, there should be no money attached to it.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody can really say that because of it, I mean, it's going to be a toss of a coin.
We can't speak upon how it's going to come along.
I mean, again.
Councilman Wensel? And then we'll wrap this up.
But I, you know, grievances have been known to go to arbitration and be paid.
But if the original, if the original grievance doesn't have a dollar amount lost in there, it cannot be awarded later on through the process either.
I'll tell you what, you tell that to a judge when he comes down with his hammer and says, you're banned.
Councilman Wensel?
You know, we've got, what we heard is a almost $2 million surplus. What equipment would you need to make your department run more efficiently? Just off the top of your head?
My department's different. I don't work in the highway department. Every department's different. Every supervisor has a different opinion. That's why it's left up to the director and the mayor to figure out what they can afford and what to go buy. That's not, that's not for me to say.
Well, two street sweepers, that sounds, to do a whole garbage area in one day, that's, that's like crazy. What happens if one just breaks down and you're...
Well, that's what hap, well, no, there's, there's more, there's more than two, but I believe there's one or two being worked on right now. I don't know offhand.
I understand that they're obsolete. The parts are obsolete for some of them.
Our newest street sweeper, the one, it's the newest one, it's obsolete. You can't even buy parts for it. Is that correct?
Parts are hard to get.
Yeah, I understand they're obsolete.
And sometimes...
They are.
That's what happens with low bid.
Yeah.
We get the models that nobody else wants.
When you go to buy street sweepers, because they're almost a half a million apiece, normally what we do is other cities, we go around and the DPW directors in the Down River are very good at this. So, and Bill goes to those meetings. So what you do is you try to get a quantity discount and hopefully, rather than paying a half million, maybe get it for 450 or 475.
Not much of a deal.
But, but every 25,000...
I'm just saying, it's not much of a deal, but it's better than nothing.
But that's how we buy those. And so, and the other one is sometimes, although one time, the county went out for about 15 of them, and so that was a good opportunity to buy. And so we look at that option, too.
I saw one of those street sweepers up close, stopped in front of my house. And I can say there's a lot of lack of maintenance being done on them. Because I'll tell you what, if I was the leader, the guys that were worked under me that did preventative maintenance, if I saw that after they got done at 2:00 PM, they'd be gone without no question, no question whatsoever. I looked at, I looked at some of those gearboxes, I'm saying, really? How about taking a toothbrush and clean them off? I mean, preventative maintenance, that's my background, is preventative and predictive maintenance. And I see some of that stuff, and none of that's being done. And if we're supposed to be doing it, it's not getting done right.
Okay, I think at this time, we are ready to conclude. Yeah, we'll open up to comment after we conclude and then...
I'm done.
Okay, let's open up to comment.
Okay.
Come, name, address, in three minutes, please.
My name is Chrissy Lazlo. I live on Charlesworth Street. On, council asked a bunch of questions during Mikey's inquisition, and I just wanted to add a couple of things. The city's had a tree contractor since 1963. They've always had a tree contractor. I know somebody on council thought we just got a tree contractor. We've always had a tree contractor. Tree contractors got more expensive because of the licensing they need. So unless we have a big tree, we try to do a lot of the trims in-house. Councilman Muscat asked for a list that the union has. The union does provide a list to the city who's number one, who's number two, who's number three on call, on call.
On call, that's right. Yeah, but I'm just talking about overtime.
Well, wait, let me, let me finish. Because this, this started last September when somebody in the union brought it to the administration's attention that they're not asked in the morning. They've never been asked in the morning. However, they do usually know if it's their week one, they're probably going to be working Monday through Saturday. There's always something that they're going to be doing. The, the, last September, Bill Zimmer and I met with some of the union leaders and we said, put your members on notice. They will be asked to work overtime until we can knock this tree list down, until we can knock other things down to get it manageable. In the meantime, we continue to hire and we continue to have lists as well. In December, the union president came to me and said two of his members weren't asked. They were made whole for those two situations. In March, I found out that it was a little lax again. So the highway representative and the waters representative would contact either Bill Zimmer or myself if they weren't asked, and we would make it right, even if we had to call them back in the yard. But once again, we told the union. So if the union's not being asked by three, they need to know that this is their notice or they need to go to their union representatives. Because their union representatives say that they will tell all of their members that overtime is pretty much a given Monday through Saturday until we get this stuff knocked out. As of May, it has been to every single supervisor that is saying, it is offered. They, like Mikey said, they might not come in till three and asked, but you pretty much know you're work, you know you're working. And if you're not working, then the mayor's office or Bill gets a phone call. So that's mine on that. The last thing, somebody mentioned equipment. Dale Jones, the garage operator or superintendent, did look at some small dumps and a couple of sweepers, and they're looking with Down River to do a five-year lease to purchase. That's not normally the case with these big equipments. You have to do it outright. They are looking at that and Bill is supposed to be meeting with Dale at the end of the week to bring a proposal to the mayor to get some of this equipment and then put the other stuff on a five-year plan. Spreading it over five years is a little more palatable.
Okay, thank you.
Is she done?
Well, no, we're at three minutes. Go ahead. How much more you got?
I mean, she let her finish. I mean...
I'll let you go because you probably not that much more.
Well, my, yeah, my last thing is if any union member is coming to you and seeing that they're not offered overtime, tell that union member to go to their representative. Because their representative has not contacted us since May. We have not, so if somebody's telling you something different, the process is they go to their union representative. And a few have been in unions to know, you go to your union representative. They do what they have to do by going to the director at first. And like I said, it was made right in December. It was made right in March, as far as I know from the calls that we got. And while I'm no longer in that position, I do know that there's been no calls made because I talked about it. Thank you.
I just want one follow-up on that. The one thing, though, is you're really not working overtime until you get asked. It's not probably or, hey, you might be working today or, but you're, until you get asked, you're not working.
I understand that. But, but I can tell you that you know on your week one, you don't schedule anything. You can talk to, you've got people in this audience that on your week one, you're not going to schedule anything. If your union representatives and your supervisors told you there is overtime Monday through Saturday, they are asking you. And if they don't ask, we get notified. you. And if they don't ask, we get notified.
Well, yeah, it's not fair to ask her. It doesn't fall on her, it falls on that department.
Right. But I just, I'm letting council know.
I agree, but I'm just saying, until, until someone is asked, you want to work overtime, and a person, you know, has the opportunity to say yes or no, they're not being asked until they're asked.
I understand that. But as their union representatives told them, or should have told them, it is available. So plan on working. And if you're not asked, we find out.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, please.
Thank you, and thank you for those updates. Quick question, just for clarification. Because I know you shared several things along a timeline, and I know your position had changed recently as well. And forgive me, because I'm, however long it's been...
Since July 1st.
Okay. So when you're reporting, and of course, you're a resident. I want to acknowledge that, yes. But when you're presenting here, are you still the liaison, so to speak, between, like, you know, the department head, Director Zimmer, or Mr. Blackburn, the union members? Are you still that person? Because you have this timeline, which I appreciate. I just want clarification, if I may.
But, not really. There's been nothing that's come up. However, I did talk to Bill Zimmer today, and he told me that nothing's come up, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Abada?
Just want to check, is there overtime every single day?
Monday through Friday and Saturday, until we get this list. There, there's a list that goes back many, many years for trees. And it's because the Emerald Ash Bore, and before that, it's because of the Dutch elm disease. It's, it's not just this. In addition, a lot of trees were planted around the 1960s, and those silver maples only live about 50 to 60 years. So now we're having a lot of problems with them coming down.
The reason I'm asking this, if there's overtime every single day, no matter what, because we're way behind, and I'm just trying to be logical here, then how could it not make sense for administration to say, okay, Lisa, you can do overtime Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, et cetera?
It's volunteer. What we're doing is saying, Lisa, do you want to work six days overtime? Tom, would you like to as well? Dave, would you like to as well? I'm sorry, I'm using names. We're saying, everybody. It's not just one person working. We'll go two crews if we can, just on trees. We'll, we'll do as much as we can.
What I'm saying, it could be predictive, is what I'm saying.
It is predictive.
Since there is, since there is overtime every single day, no matter what, it seems like you could get some employees to agree to do it.
People on trees. We'll stay on trees.
But even if there was like seven, Mr. Blackburn said there was only 17 members that were willing to do this, since we know every single day there is, including next week, and the week after, and the week after, and the week after, it seems logical that you could get people to sign up for it.
But it is, through the union list. That's, that's how, it, it's not a process that needs to or should be changed. They, they know. And, and, and like, somebody's whispering in the back, we do have to rotate, too. We can't have the number three crew say, I want to be on trees for the next four weeks when the number one crew can trump them, so.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
Can we get equal time, something from the University of Michigan, please, if you don't mind? Can't have this state stuff.
It's my husband's sweatshirt, sorry.
I know.
I wasn't going to say a word.
We should get equal time.
Okay, all right, guys. All right, all right.
Can you come up, please?
We got someone up there. Name?
Hi, my name is Tamara. I am an employee, but I'm going to speak as a wife, because I also have a husband who's in DPW and Highway Department. And I'll let you know this, that he didn't get, start asking every day until probably end of August, beginning of September. Okay? And personally, ourselves, we have three kids, and we're doing lots of construction at our house right now that we've saved and planned for six years. So in the last month, is he able to work too a lot? No. Was he able to work tonight? Yes. Did he work last Saturday? Yes. But before that, do you know how many times he came home and said, he'd call me at 2:00, oh, anything going on with the kids today, because I got to work overtime? Yep, sure, not a problem. I got the kids. Then he comes home, oh, nope, never mind, I got the kids. Only two people could work overtime. It takes four people for cutting trees. It takes two people for cutting grass. Up until they started asking every day, if only three people said yes to overtime, they still sent the rest home. Okay? So it saddens me that somebody's going to sit over there and say, let's call them ABC, okay? Let's call them ABC, because I don't want to ruin their name. What about your employees? What are you doing to your employees right now? Okay? You're making them look bad to the residents, and that's not fair to them. Especially since, wait, these are the same guys that you said, good job on working 104 hours in the wintertime for shoveling snow? Not okay, and not right.
Thank you very much. Hey, at this time, do you want to...
Higher rules, you should ask all of them to leave for clapping.
It's not the first time that's happened. In, in, in the whole, everywhere. Hey, all right, all right. At this point, we're going to, go ahead.
Okay, so I just, two things. One, I wanted to talk about how overtime works in my department, because I think it's similar. I was a little...
Yeah, see, but we don't have problems in your department. You were working perfect with your overtime.
I know, but I just want to... Well, it doesn't. Let me tell you. Because if people refuse to come, there's nobody else that can go in except for me. So, the way mine, mine works, and it was explained to me when I first started being in charge of overtime, is it was similar to the way they do it in DPW. Every week, someone knows that it's their week. So potentially, they could be called in every single day for an animal or mostly animal emergencies, on occasions, an ordinance situation. So even though it's their first week, they can still refuse to do it. And so then I would go to the person that's second on the list. If they refused, I could go to the third. If they refused, I would go to the fourth. And then we have no one else certified after that. So then it would fall on me to come in and address that. So, and for clarifications, because I think, well, I'll just say, I, I have the most respect for our employees. I hope nobody gets that confused. I help some, I've, I've directed a lot of people here to even get jobs. Some of them that were family friends, that I invited to come work here, told them it was a great place to work, they could have a long career here. The only reason I keep, when I say that I'm concerned about using that company's name so much, there's this impression that, that they're doing something evil. They are, they're a contract company that we went to, or we selected, in my case, based on their, their experience, based on their reputation, and based on the costs that they provided to us. In no way is my statement, when I say, can I refer to them as ABC, because their name just keeps getting thrown out there all the time, as if they're doing something wrong. They were, they were asked to do it. They didn't come to us and ask, ask to do it. The reason I said that is for that reason. It had nothing to do, in no way does it have anything to do with my opinion of the employees. I, I, I work with some really fine people every single day, and I'm, I'm very impressed with how hard the people in this city work, so.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lewensel?
One question for Mr. Blackburn. 11 employees in Highway, how many of those 11 do you need each night to work overtime?
Well, at least four for the tree crew. That's what I think we've determined.
It'd be nice if all 11 worked.
You could use all 11.
You could use all 11, because we have the high range of the main tree, tree, tree truck to do main trimming. But we also have another truck with a chipper on it, where the guys can do ground trimming, too. Go up and down the street, every house, ground trim, what, what they can with the pole saw, go by with the chipper, do it. You can have the street sweepers working overtime, sweeping the streets. So, yeah, all 11 could work in a single day, and there is enough crew. Plus, there's also street signs.
Every day, all 11? Or do you have a minimum that you have, like, we're only, you're going to need four today? Do you ever say that?
They, we go, well, for safety reasons, we do four for a tree truck, only because when you're going up in the buck and stuff and other vehicles involved, four is a good number for a tree crew. But we have a second truck and a chipper where we can have two tree crews. That's eight people right there.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I think we are ready to conclude?
Yep.
Good job.